Good evening. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the August 23rd, 2022 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of the Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter, and then please select Zoning Board of Adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the proceeding and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols and procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for up to 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or an opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Tonight Linda McGee, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option which can be found under Reactions on a Computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question comment. Please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua Zoning Board in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. We will... For this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. Myself, Mary Ellen McKay, Chair, Steve Lionell, Vice Chair, J.P. Boucher, Rob Shaw, and Mr. Jack Courier, our clerk, is with us via Zoom. We also have the following alternate members in attendance, Jayman Kara, Nick Kanakis, and Estaphia Boris. In addition to Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Linda McGee, the zoning coordinator for this evening, and I do not see Mr. Sullivan. I would like to take a roll call, then we will start the meeting. Mr. Falk, would you care to do that, or would you prefer that I did that?
I can do it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mary Ellen McKay?
Present.
Steve Lionell?
Present.
Jayman Kara?
Present.
J.P. Boucher?
Present.
Rob Shaw?
Present.
Nick Kanakis?
Present.
Estaphia Boris?
Present via Zoom.
And Jack Courier.
Present via Zoom. I'm Zoomed from a view of a pretty planned out of being out of Nashua.
I'm also via Zoom. I was out of state. I was in Florida.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now read the first case into... Oh, Agenda. I'm sorry. Are there any changes to our agenda, Mr. Falk?
Yes, Madam Chair. The case for 7 Meredith Drive has been... Well, it will not come back to this Board. They don't need to come back to this Board anymore. And the case for 45 Langholm will not be heard tonight. It will be tabled to the September 14th meeting.
Do you need a motion to that effect, that we are tabling it to the September 14th meeting?
You should make a motion, yeah.
Okay, then I will make a motion that the...
September 13th.
No, September 14th.
Oh, because of the election.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a win. The 14th is a Wednesday.
Right, right, right.
So we're a little different.
Yeah.
But I'll make the motion that 45 Langholm Drive will be tabled from the... this meeting until September 14th?
Yes.
2022. Do I have a second?
Paul's second.
Thank you, Mr. Lionell. Mr. Kanakis, oh no. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionell, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionell votes in favor.
I, Mary Ellen McKay, vote in favor. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Thank you. That's five to nothing. It is tabled to that meeting. Before I go forward, the... There must be five voting members. If all regular members are present, should a regular member not be present or recuse themselves, one of our alternates, Mr. Mankara, Mr. Kanakis, or Ms. Boris will be appointed by the Chair to vote in their place. But any discussion, any of the meeting that takes place around the cases, all members present will be involved. Now we will move forward to reading the first case into the record. CMI Leasing Corporation Owner, Brothers of the Sacred Heart of Bishop Gerton High School Incorporated, applicant 40 Groton Road, Sheet D, Lot 7, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115 to work within a critical wetland buffer and other wetland buffer for the development of an athletic facility and associated site improvements. This is in the R40 zone in Ward 5. Is there somebody present to present this case? Please state your name and address for the record, and as I stated earlier, you have up to 15 minutes to present your case.
Well, thank you. Good evening. For the record, members of the Board, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Here tonight representing the owner and applicant for the reference special exception. With me here tonight is Attorney Gerald Purnier, Purnier &amp; Prollman, who's the project attorney, along with Linda Broder and Jason Sternisty from Bishop Gerton High School. They're both on Zoom. We're here tonight seeking a special exception to disturb approximately 41,000 square feet of wetland buffer areas associated with a proposed athletic playfield facility to be located upon the subject lot, 40 Groton Road. I have a short presentation that I'd like to share. I'd like to address a few of the zoning board criteria for special exception, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Yeah, Linda, that's a good plan right there. So as I mentioned, the subject site is 40 Groton Road, located in the southwest part of the city, Map D, Lot 7. It's about a 47-acre site located in the R40 residential zone. Site is abutted by single-family residents to the north, east, and west, and conservation land to the south in Dunstable, Mass. Our client, Bishop Gerton High School, has an agreement to purchase the property from the current property owner, who has owned the land for many years. Currently, the site is being used as a gravel pit and material stockpile operation, which has been ongoing for many years. This use is located in the central portion of the site with gated access off of Groton Road. In the westerly and northerly portions of the site, there are numerous wetlands. These encompass roughly a third of the site. The easterly portion of the site is mostly wooded with evidence of previous earth removal activities that have since revegetated. The topography on the site is relatively flat, with the exception of some of the large stockpile areas that are out there. The soils are generally well-drained, with the exception of where earth has been taken within the aforementioned operation. Wetlands on-site were flagged by the project's certified wetland scientist, GOV Environmental Services, and subsequently surveyed by our office. There are three vernal pool areas identified on-site, one located in the central portion of the site, up along Groton Road, and two others located in the southwesterly portion of the site. It is important to note that this site has been used as somewhat of an official cut-through from Groton Road to the Dunstable Mass conservation land. If any members of the Board have been out there on a nice day, there can be anywhere from 10 to 15 cars parked along the Groton Road right away and trespassed through the site through a paved path to get to that Dunstable Mass conservation land. We're not aware of any formal agreements or easements that are in place to allow this to happen. So as I mentioned, we are here tonight proposing an athletic field complex upon this property to be used by Bishop Gerton High School. Access to the site will be provided via a new site driveway off of Groton Road along the easterly side of the property. The program includes three multipurpose athletic fields, a six-lane running track, six tennis courts, a small maintenance and locker room building, along with associated parking and site improvements. The facility is intended to be used as a satellite facility for BG's main campus on Lunrode. If you're familiar with the Lunrode site, it does have limitations in terms of field space, and BG is currently sending their students all over the place to various fields, tracks, and facilities to practice and play their games. The intent of this facility is to provide one central location for the majority of BG's fall and spring season teams, soccer, lacrosse, football, track and field, tennis, and softball. Practice and games are contemplated for this facility for all levels, with the exception of varsity football and other of the larger attendant events. There are no press boxes or stadium seating proposed for this location. It will just have portable bleachers or spectators can view around the outside. I did want to make that distinction about the intended use. Playfield lighting is proposed, and all fields and courts will be lit when in use if needed. And as I mentioned, there won't be any grandstands or press boxes, nor concessions within the building. Some of the other site aspects, 210 parking spaces broke up into two separate lots, apparent bus drop-off in both parking areas. There will be a small septic system to service the maintenance locker room building located in the interior of the site. Public water and underground utilities will be extended to the site. There are significant stormwater management improvements to be proposed along with this project, and as you will notice from the plan, the BG portion of the facility will be fully fenced in and locked when not in use. So as we were going through in the design of this project, careful consideration was made in the design and layout to minimize environmental impact, specifically the large wetland areas in the northerly and westerly portions of the site and their associated buffers. As a result, we have come before you here tonight with a plan that completely avoids any direct wetland impacts and has minimized the buffer impacts as best as possible. In total, the project proposes an impact of 41,070 square feet of buffer area, and it's important to note that the majority of this proposed buffer impact is either related to the restoration revegetation of currently disturbed buffer areas or associated with the proposed wide and shoulder pedestrian improvements along Groton Road. Certainly, one of the most exciting components to this project is that there are two improvements related to pedestrian connectivity that will significantly enhance pedestrian movement in this part of the city. Our site, as you can see, has a lot of frontage along Groton Road, about 1,800 linear feet, and the site has the opportunity to provide a key missing link between the east and west. So to the northeast of us is Southwest Park Udicke Farm, and to the west of this is an existing sidewalk near Hadley Drive that connects to the Nashville Rail Trail. Along this frontage on Groton Road, there's challenging topography, utility pools, mature trees, and wetlands and wetland buffers to contend with. So when working with, in a preliminary nature, with planning and engineering staff, we've come up with a solution that will hopefully balance both providing this much-needed connectivity along the frontage of the site while minimizing environmental impacts along that stretch, and therefore what we're proposing is an eight-foot wide and paved shoulder along the entire frontage on Groton Road of this site. And that will be able to be used by pedestrians and bicyclists. As I mentioned, there are two kind of big pedestrian improvements. So along Groton Road, that's number one. Number two is that the project includes a paved parking lot, a public parking lot, and trail connection to the Dunstable Conservation Land. So this would be located in a public access easement to be conveyed to the city. The city would then perform the long-term maintenance. So if you look at the plan, on the top right-hand corner, there's an existing pedestrian crosswalk that exists along Groton Road. So we would really pick up the trail there and run it north-south along that entirely... the entire easterly property line, and you can also see the new parking area trailhead that would be proposed and used by the public. That trail will then continue to the south and connect into the Dunstable Mass conservation land. The Dunstable Rural Land Trust was contacted about this project. They did submit a letter of support as part of the use variance application that was before you this past spring. I'd also like to mention, over the last few months, we have worked extensively with the Conservation Commission on their review of the project, including conducting a site walk, such that a favorable recommendation was issued on August 9th for the overall project and associated wetland buffers. Madam Chair, as you know, under Section 190-115 in the Nashua Land Use Code, a special exception is required to alter wetland or wetland buffer. Special exception is allowed use subject to meeting the five criteria points as listed in 190-134-F. In addition, there are nine criteria that must be met as outlined in 190-115-B, included in our application as our testimony in which we believe we meet each of these criteria points. I was going to reference those into the record. I'd be happy to expand on each of those points if it is the will of the Board.
Does any Board member want to have them attest formally, aside from we have the your statement now for the record? We have the wetland buffer encroachments affidavit signed right here in our pocket. I think that we should be okay.
Okay, yeah. There are point-by-point responses to each of those, and like I said, if there are questions, I'd be happy to expand on each of those individually.
Well, thank you. I'm sure if there's questions aboard, we'll be happy to ask.
So in summary, we believe our request is reasonable and conforms with the intent of the Land Use Code. The design of the project seeks to minimize or eliminate proposed impacts to wetlands, buffers, and other environmentally sensitive areas of the site. The proposed wetland buffer impacts are needed to redevelop the property in a responsible manner, and it is our opinion that will provide a significant improvement compared to the previously disturbed buffer areas that exist today. As I mentioned, we did receive a favorable recommendation from the Conservation Commission and have no issue with the conditions as outlined in their letter, and we respectfully seek your approval here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the Board have any questions, Mr. Lionell?
Yes. Regarding the paved pedestrian and bicycle way that's along Groton Road, is this going to be, have like a raised curb or something to deter cars from parking along there, which they apparently do now?
We haven't quite gotten to that point with the... But we submitted our planning board site plan application. I'm guessing that's where that would come up as it relates to either planning, engineering, or fire staff. We are in receipt of a letter from Commissioner Sarno expressing some of her concerns regarding no parking being installed. So that's something that we would work with city staff on in terms of parking along Groton Road. Certainly, the intent is an eight-foot wide shoulder for pedestrians and bicyclists to use, so cars parked along that area would impact that. I would say, though, that the majority of cars that are out there now, of course, because they have nowhere to park. So in theory, if they were parking on our site in the new public parking lot, as well as the 200-plus spaces available on-site, we would hope to really minimize or eliminate any need for parking along the frontage.
Okay, thank you.
And, thank you. This is a planning board issue for the parking. Is that not correct, Mr. Zajak? That would be more planning than zoning?
I would say so. It's something that we'll need to coordinate.
Just curious.
Did any other member of the Board have any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor? Oh, wait, before I do that, we do have receipt of the CONCOMs, the Conservation Commission's letter of approval. Now, would anyone here like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody here with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom with any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
Hi, I do have a question. My name is Caitlin Pazano, and I'm at 72 Groton Road, so I am abutting the property in question. In regards to the commentary about putting in a six-foot paved area, I wanted to understand, will that go west down Groton Road to connect to Hadley?
That is a question for Mr. Zajak.
Well, when...
Oh, okay.
Whenever all the questions are done, then he comes up and talks.
Yep. Does anyone else have any comments, questions, concerns, or opposition?
Madam Chair, I think just to make sure she also didn't have anything else. She might not have been done with her questions.
Were you done with your question, Caitlin?
I am, yes.
Thank you. And I do...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was another email, I believe, was sent to the Board earlier this morning.
She's got a copy of it right here.
Yeah, let's see.
And this is... All right, this letter is from Carol Sarno, who is not an abutter. And she states, "My name is Carol Sarno, and I live at 15 Rocky Hill Drive in Nashua. I cannot attend your August 23rd meeting, so I'm expressing my concern in this email. I am familiar with this project because it came before the Nashua Conservation Commission where I serve. I am writing as a citizen and not representing the Commission. I am familiar with the 40 Groton Road parcel because of its proximity to conservation land, both in Nashua and Dunstable. I understand that a paved shoulder will be added along 40 Groton Road to improve pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. This should make it safer for walkers and bikers to travel along this stretch of Groton Road, which is a good thing. I hope that the plan is to include appropriate signage along this new shoulder to encourage use by bikers and walkers and restrict use by motorized vehicles. Symbols or crosshatching on the shoulder pavement combined with no parking signs along the shoulder edge should make the intent of the new pedestrian shoulder clear. Development across the street at 35 Groton Road includes a similar pedestrian shoulder, which has yet to be marked with signs or symbols. I have seen cars parked on this shoulder. Allowing parking on these pedestrian shoulders puts pedestrians and bikers at risk. There is a high likelihood that users who currently access the Dunstable Rural Land Trust, DRLT, property through 40 Groton Road will want to continue to park along the road. Bishop Gerton, BG, has generously provided parking for DRLT access on their site, and users should be encouraged to use that parking. Signage indicating availability of this parking should be included. A significant portion of the wetland buffer impact of this project is for this public pedestrian improvement. If parking is allowed on the pedestrian connectivity shoulder, I fear this shoulder will eventually become overflow parking. Use for public pedestrian access will have a lesser impact on the adjacent wetlands than vehicle parking. Please include signage to prohibit parking in this public pedestrian connectivity area. Thank you for considering my concerns, Carol Sarno." Since there was no application for any signage, I'm going to let Mr. Zajak handle some of
So again, for the record, Tom Zajak. I would say that both of these issues are probably more planning-related than zoning. The sidewalk is something that we're working with city staff on. There would be, you know, this widened sidewalk along the 1,800 linear foot frontage of this property, which is a considerable amount and considerable cost. As we've mentioned, we're also providing this connection to the Dunstable Land open space, including parking and an easement to the city, which is, in my opinion, above and beyond what, you know, BG is needing to provide in terms of connectivity. So right now, we are not proposing any improvements in front of... There are three residential properties along Groton Road between the westerly end of our site and the Hadley Drive sidewalk that exists out there now. So I would say that and the signage is something that we'll work with planning and engineering staff as we move forward with the project.
Thank you, and it would be addressed again at planning. Mr. Zajak?
Yes.
Kristin, do you have any response? You have two minutes with which to speak to Mr. Zajak's response to you.
I think you might have meant Caitlin.
Caitlin, I'm sorry.
No worries, thank you. No, I'm actually pleased with his response that there's currently no plans to connect it to.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else with... Oh, no, we're done. Okay, since we have addressed this, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionell?
I'm in support of the application. They've met all the requirements, and we have the positive recommendation from the Conservation Commission, and I applaud their attention to detail and recognizing the use of the public, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis?
I don't have anything to add. I'm in support of the application.
Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in support of the application, nothing to add.
Mr. Courier?
I'm in support of the application. I think, you know, the mitigation is fine for what they're proposing. I also want to say, I think BG is proposing to go beyond what's needed for the wetlands here with the, you know, likely public parking and the bike path there. I think that's beyond the call of duty, so I'm all good with the application.
Thank you. Ms. Boris?
I'm also in support of the application.
Mr. Shaw?
Support as well, and I also think it's important to note that a lot of the impact is due to either remediation of existing disturbance of the buffers or of this additional paved shoulder along Groton Road. So I think those are things... There's both restoration, and I think there's an overall hopeful benefit for overall safety of the citizens of Nashua. So for those reasons, as... So for those reasons, as well as all the other criteria, I am in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
I'm also in favor for the reasons stated.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I am also in favor for all of the above-mentioned reasons. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, CMI Leasing Corp. The applicant is Brothers of the Sacred Heart of Bishop Gerton High School. The address is 40 Groton Road, and that's Sheet D, Lot 7. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115 to work within a critical wetland buffer and, quote, "other wetland buffer" for the development of an athletic facility and associated site improvements. This is in the R40 zone. The special exception is listed in the table of uses as just noted in the description. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, and it's, I think, in some regards, expected that there will actually be a overall benefit to pedestrian safety especially. There should not be any overloading of public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The special regulations are fulfilled. Those are the nine wetland special conditions. The, we have the written testimony as further attested to in the verbal testimony tonight, that that will be adhered to. And it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. And for these reasons, I move to approve this special exception. Oh, thank you, yes. And with the noted stipulations of, first of all, the positive recommendation from the Conservation Commission on the August 9, 2022, meeting, with the three criteria as noted in their correspondence that the applicant has agreed to follow. So with that in mind, again, I'll move to approve the special exception.
And thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. That's a unanimous decision. The board has granted your special exception. Congratulations. You should be aware that anyone has up to 30 days with which to challenge any decision by this board. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. And again, thank you for your presentation. Moving on to case number two. Robert Bonapine, owner, Carley Orlandi, applicant, 171 Cypress Lane, Sheet E, Lot 963, requesting the following: Special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached accessory in-law dwelling unit; and two, special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16E3, Table 16-2, for a minor encroachment to encroach up to one foot into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct an attached 12-by-50 accessory in-law dwelling unit on the rear of the house. This is in the R9 zone in Ward 1. Is there somebody here to present this application?
Good morning.
Please step forward and state your names and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Carrie Orlandi, and this is Robert Bonapine of 171 Cypress Street in Nashua, and...
Cypress Lane.
Cypress Lane. We're here because this is a necessary dwelling. We're looking for a special exemption for one foot that will encroach into the 30-foot setback. It would make it 29.
Okay.
So this is 50 by 12, which equals 600 square feet. The existing house is 72 feet long. It would be built in the back of the house.
And before I ask the board for any questions, have you seen the stipulations around the accessory dwelling units?
We have.
And do you agree to all nine points?
Yes, there's no exception to any of those.
Okay, thank you very much. I just need that for the record and your assent. Does any member of the board have any questions of the applicants? Okay, now I can see them, thanks. No questions. No questions. Does anybody present have any questions, comments, can, oh, no, any wishing to speak in favor of this application? God, it's been a long week.
It's only Tuesday.
And it's only Tuesday. Is anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here wishing to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none? Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none? Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
Hi, I'm on Zoom. My name's Hillary Bonapine. So I live at 171 Cypress Lane as well, and I just wanted to ask about if the application includes, there was also a proposed plan that is slightly larger than the one-foot encroachment. I think it's about four feet encroaching, so I was wondering if that was available to be considered.
The plan we have in front of us indicates one foot. That's the plan under consideration, and that is the only plan under consideration.
Okay.
Mr. Falk.
Otherwise, it would have to be re-advertised for a greater approach.
Right. It would take a new application process. So...
Also, the addition would be greater than 700 square feet.
I hear a baby. What was that, Mr. Falk? I'm not sure she heard you.
The size of the addition would be greater, and it may exceed the size of the ADU.
Okay. Hillary, did you hear Mr. Falk, the deputy planning director?
She's muted at the moment.
Yes. Sorry, I couldn't unmute it. Yeah, I heard. Thank you.
Okay, and you understand that we're only doing the one foot?
Yeah, I, I thought they were both going to be included, but I guess that would have to be a whole separate application.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public meeting and open the public hearing. You may have a seat, or you can stand, as you both wish. Mr. Boucher.
I'm in favor of the application. I think it's a, even though the addition is really wide, I think it's, again, just a real minor impact on the setback. And again, from the front of the house, you would never know. So I don't see any reason to, for myself, to deny the application. So I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier.
I think Mr. Boucher has captured my thoughts. In summary, I'm in favor of it. Not going to see it from the street, and there's no reason to deny. It meets the criteria of a special exception.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, likewise in support. I think especially the one-foot encroachment is a very minor. So, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
I'm also in support of both special exceptions.
Mr. Minkara.
I'm in support of both special exception applications as well.
Mr. Knakis.
I'm in support of both as well.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I'm in support of both as well.
Thank you. And myself, Marielle McKay, I'm also in support of both. Is there someone who would care to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Mr. Lionel, thank you.
Okay, so we have two special exceptions. The first one, the owner is Robert Bonapine. The applicant is Carrie Orlandi, address 171 Cypress Lane, Sheet E, Lot 963, requesting the following: First, special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit. And, we're going to do these together, I think. And two, special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-16E3, Table 16-2, for a minor encroachment to encroach up to one foot into the 30-foot required rear yard setback, both to construct an attached 12-foot by 50-foot accessory dwelling unit on the rear of the house. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 1. The board finds that this is listed in the table of uses. We have no evidence that it will create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, being in the rear of the house. It will, we have no testimony that it will overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or other municipal systems. We have agreement that the special regulations are fulfilled, and the board believes that it will not impair integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents. Therefore, I make a motion to approve both special exceptions.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. That's five to nothing. It's unanimous. Congratulations. Your special exceptions have been granted. As we will state all evening, any person has the option to challenge any decision made by this board, and they have up to 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any concerns or comments or need any assistance, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. Other than that, thank you for your presentation and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our final case of the evening. Matthew and Alicia Gregg, owners, 4 Eastbrook Drive, Sheet A, Lot 668, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 17 feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct an attached 20-by-30 addition on rear of garage. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 7. And I see Attorney Prunier, you are here, sir, to present this case, I'm assuming.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney in Nashor, New Hampshire, here representing the applicants, both of which are also here this evening.
Ma'am, excuse me, I'm sorry. I forgot something. Sorry, I apologize. Sorry, Attorney.
Good eyes, good eyes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Boucher.
The property is located in the southeast corner of Nashor, off of Farmington Road. The topography of this property is different. It has a little hill. The house is built on the level period, and then there's a little hill in the back that goes up to the neighbors' properties. The garage, which we're trying to add on, sits a couple of feet back from the front of the house, and I think the purpose of that is to try to get a better angle for the driveway up into the garage for the piece of property. Even though the, the house sits on a level piece of property on top of the hill, it, the reason, that's the reason for the garage where it is located in reference to the house. They want to add an addition, which will make it 13 feet from the rear property line. The desire is to square off, I believe, hopefully, the pitches that were submitted have been in as well, but on the side of the house is, want to continue it on into the back of the house, squaring off part of the garage at the same time. The, the top of the roof line will follow the present roof line to the rear of the house and fit in with the architecture that presently exists. There will be sufficient space in the rear of the house between the property line and the addition to the garage, if granted, for fire personnel to get around and with circulation as well. It is going to stay as a single-family home. It is not going to deteriorate from or diminish the surrounding values. As you see, I believe, we submitted quite a few of the butters, all of the butters, plus some other neighbors, in support of this addition to the garage. The purpose is to allow the use of the garage for an additional car and for storage, and as well as probably on the top floor, maybe room for a, an office for the work-at-home people that resulted, that's a result of COVID-19. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the, the board has...
Mr. Shaw.
Will the addition just be following the existing roof line, and so that upper level you're talking about is really more of a attic space, or it's not, there will not be a second store?
Storage space, yeah, no, storage space, yeah. It's going to follow that line.
Right, okay. And then the other thing is, I don't know if things changed a little bit, or you possibly misspoke. You said about 15 feet. So is there two feet less encroachment planned now, or is it still the 17-feet encroachment?
It's 17 feet.
Okay, because at one point you said 15.
13 feet from the property line.
Yeah, okay. I thought I heard 15. I just wanted to...
No, no, 13 feet from the property line, so it's the rear.
Thank you.
Mr. Lionel.
Attorney Prunier, you had mentioned that they wanted to make, to add space in the garage for a third car. So I'm trying to figure out how, how that's going to work with, even if they just build out that...
One will go, will have to go all the way back to the rear, and then another one parked in front of it.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Attorney Prunier? I don't see any. There's nobody present in the room except the applicants, so that I can't ask if anyone speaks in favor. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, again, there's nobody present to speak in opposition either. Though, before I move to that, we do have a copy of all of those emails that all of the abutting neighbors sent. So since they're already incorporated into the packet and the record, there should be no necessity to read them, Mr. Falk?
You don't have to. I mean, we have them all in the record. I believe they all say the same thing, just signed by different neighbors.
They're all in approval?
Yes.
Okay, and well, just to be, one, two, three, four. We have eight.
Wait, to read the names.
Um...
Well, it's kind of hard.
Yeah. So, we do have eight from four. Let's see.
You can read the addresses.
Yeah, there's 12 Westbrook, 14 Westbrook, three Eastbrook, six Eastbrook, 10 Westbrook, seven Eastbrook, two Eastbrook, and five Eastbrook. So that is, all of the neighbors have sent us emails in the affirmative. They support the application. Is there anyone on Zoom with any comments, questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? I don't see any, and so I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Carrier.
First, I had some pause with this application.
First, I had some pause with this application because it's a large encroachment. I have to say, it was, having seemingly all the abutters speak in approval of this is persuasive. And I guess one other point I'd like to make is that, given the topography, this is downhill from the backyard neighbor. And also, there's seemingly a pretty thick row of evergreen trees on the property line that looks like it pretty much shields the houses in the backyard from seeing one another. So to me, that's kind of a special condition on the land. And without any opposition of the rather large encroachment, I think I'm willing to support it, but I'm looking at hearing the other opinions of the board.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I am in support also, and I think, actually, I think most of what Mr. Carrier just said is the reasons why I am in support.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in support for the reasons spoken to. And again, just to reiterate, I think special conditions are, are the topography of the land, the placement of the house, where they had to place it to try to get that entrance into the garage, the current garage. So, and then again, the shielding to the backyard. And again, it's not going to be something that'll be obtrusive to the neighbors behind because of the topography. So I'm supporting the application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I'm also in support for the reasons stated.
Mr. Minkara?
I struggle to find support, honestly, just given the enormity of the structure and the extent of the intrusion into the setback.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis?
I'm in support of the application for the reasons stated.
Ms. Boris?
I'm in support of the application for the reasons stated.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I'm also in support of the application for all the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Matthew and Alicia Gregg, owners of 4 Eastbrook Drive, Sheet A Lot 668, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach 17 feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct an attached 20-by-30 foot addition on the rear of the garage. It's in R9 Zone Ward 7. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of property. Again, special conditions we find, the topography of the land. Again, somewhat of, special conditions also is the placement of the house because of the entrance into the existing garage. And again, the property is lower than the property behind it. So again, the impact we find will be minimal to the neighbor in the rear. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interests, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel, for your second. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the motion to approve.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And myself, Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor, Attorney Pullman, Mr. and Mrs. Gregg. Congratulations. Your application has been approved. As we've stated earlier this evening, anyone can appeal any decision made by this board. They have up to 30 days with which to do so. Should you have any questions, please re refer back to Mr. Falk. Thank you for your application and good luck with your project. Thanks. Moving on, we have no agenda because we have an extra week with which to put one together. So we will go to, there's no motion for rehearing. So now we will look at the minutes. Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
I'll be abstaining on these because I was not present at the meeting. If you wanted to have another person vote for the full five, that's fine.
Well, we only had three people at the meeting.
Ah, okay.
So, but no, that's fine. To get the five votes, let's do this maybe the democratic way. Mr. Knakis, you were the first one in the room, so tonight you will vote on the minutes, sir. I make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you very much. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Who did I forget?
Shaw.
Mr. Shaw. How do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Yeah, and I forgot myself, so not feel bad. Mr. Knakis, I understand.
Ms. Knakis votes in favor.
And Marielle McKay, I also vote in favor. That's five in favor. Okay, the only other thing that we have maybe to bring up is House Bill 1661, because there will be some changes, or may or may not be some changes, to how the zoning board conducts its business going forward based on the legislation. The Planning Department has already made a decision that they need to come together and make a determination about what they're going to do, how they're going to look at it, and how it's going to affect us. And after that happens, they will then probably schedule a meeting with the zoning board and the council so that we know going forward if there's to be any changes with the Nashua zoning board. Did.
And that went into effect today, right?
Yes.
Most of it went into effect today. Most of it.
Did everyone here have the opportunity to see that presentation or attend that virtual presentation that the city did for 1661? Or I should say, the Office of the Planning and Development? Well, I went, I have, I have it on my computer. What I will do is send all the materials to the full board so you all can read what we were, what was shared with us. So, I mean, if you want it, I would think it would be a little bit interesting.
Our staff is going to have a meeting on it early next week, and then, you know, we'll go over all the issues in it, and whatever changes we need to make, we'll make. And, you know, of course, we'll run it by our legal department. And there may be some changes to the bylaws or our staff administrative policies, but, you know, we'll take a look at it next week.
I did read the bill.
Yeah, they dissected the bill pretty good. So I will send that out tonight when I get home, so I don't forget. It has been, my daughter went to camp. I don't, you know, I have free time, and so I've been crazy, crazy busy.
Okay, quick question. Sorry for the interruption, but on case number two, Cypress Lane, Mr. Lionel made the motion. I didn't catch who made, who seconded it.
Mr. Shaw.
Two? Yeah, that was Mr. Shaw.
All right, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I write it. Is there any other business that come before the board? Seeing none, would.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
7:28.
Yeah, that does not need a vote. Unless, of course, somebody wants to stay.
I could stay, and it's not at the meeting.